At this time, we'll call the March 17th, 2023 meeting into order. Anyone willing to give testimony before this board today, please stand and raise your right hand. Hereby affirm the testimony I give today to be the whole truth, please say I do.
I do.
Thank you. We need to approve the minutes from the February 17th meeting. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Do we have a motion, Mr. Renfro is second by Mr. Ricketts, to approve? All of those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Our first line of business will be our old business, the Highlands Popular Ridge. You ready, Mr. Brescher?
The clearing of the property did not get done by the time we went and did our inspection, field review, one floor. But we can still recommend approval subject to them getting it cleared by the next step in the process. This is a preliminary plat renewal. Lakeland Utility District does have revised comments that I'll let you read if you wish. They're still working through getting appropriate request for water service and water sewer service application through their utility district processes.
Okay.
And I don't know if Berndt was here with Lakeland Utility District, but he wishes to add anything.
Eric, do you want to read your comments on this, if you don't mind? Do you have those?
I can read them if you don't. So.
plat for Phase 3, the Highlands Popular Ridge subdivision, occurred on July 16th, 2020, and that the original approval has now expired. It's the district's further understanding that the preliminary plat that is now being considered by WCPC reflects no changes from the original preliminary plat that was approved two and a half years ago. While the district has determined that water service is available to serve Phase 3 of this development, 20 lots maximum, the development of future phases of the subdivision cannot be served until improvements are made, with such improvements to be at the expense of the owner and the developer. In addition, at the time of future phases, Phase 4 and beyond are ready to be developed, the developer must submit a request for water service application to determine if water is in fact available for the remaining phases. Our next comment was, since no request for water service application has been filed for Phase 3 of the Highlands Popular Ridge, the consultant engineer for the project should contact me, General Manager of the district, to initiate that process and request that a current developers agreement be prepared. And our last comment was, as with all projects in the district service area, the developer must meet the current requirements of the district in regards to revision of water service to this stage of the development.
Thank you.
Yes.
Do we have anyone else wishing to speak on this case today? Mr. Ra?
My private look design representing Universal Builders. I don't think we have any conflicts. It is expired. That's on me. We let it slip, but it is a renewal of a previous look for preliminary plat, and we would request your approval.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else here today wishing to speak on this case? Yes, sir.
Nathan Quam here, representing Mr. Paul Bowles, the property to the west. Just want to make sure there's still language in the approval, if it's granted, that water services and utility services be to the property line, to the west. That was somebody spoke about at the last meeting.
Well, ma'am, I think I can speak to that. Mr. Berndt, I spoke at length yesterday, or maybe before, can't remember. There are multiple lot lines along that common boundary, and the owner has, or the developer has agreed, and he is here, by the way, he can nod his head, we can provide one or multiple points of connection.
Should I answer your question, Mr. Quam?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this case today? Do we have any questions from our board?
Just what Tom said earlier. You still recommend, Tom? Is this established?
Yes, sir. We're somewhat hamstrung a little bit by changes in state law that changed vesting over and above what our subdivision regulations called for. So they had a preliminary plat approved that didn't actually show the connection that we've been stated and strongly prefer. If it were a brand-new plat, we would be requesting that more of a requirement style language. But we'd still appreciate consideration of the connection to the Bowles property for traffic circulation purposes. But due to vesting laws in the state of Tennessee, I don't think I have, or you as a board have the authority to vary too much from that vesting that they already have.
Mr. Ra, a question for you, sir.
Sir? How long do you think before you would have that document that they spoke about?
The developer agreement?
Yes, sir.
Well, I'll give you a little history. The construction plans for this phase are done. The change in environmental regulations post 20 election caused some extra work and some delays, and that's why it took us so long to get to the point that we can move on. But Mr. Earhart would like to proceed as soon as he possibly can. As soon as this is done, we will follow up with it, Eric, get that done, and as soon as it can be done.
So weeks, not months, basically?
Absolutely, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. That's all the questions.
Thank you. Any other questions from our board? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve from Ms. Weathers. Do we have a second?
Sir.
We have a second from Mr. Thompson. All of those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Motion carries. Now move into the new business, Tom.
Mr. Chairman, you have a copy of the resolution.
Tom, let's hold on one second here, if you don't mind, sir. I am going to make a motion that we move this and the codes change to the end of the agenda.
Second.
A motion and a second.
Would you re-accept amendment to that?
Yes, sir.
That second resolution before the first one? One about the far one?
I have no problem with that. That'll keep me tuned.
Yes, sir. I mean, that's for informational purposes only.
Right. Okay. We have a motion and a second. All of those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? That motion will carry.
Okay, so moving on, our next item of design on the agenda is a site plan for Midwest 40 Monument Site. Site plan meets requirements. Lakeland Utility District requests that the signed contractor fields take the location of the proposed monument site prior to re-instivation related to the construction of the site, and that the district be notified when the staking has been completed, so that we make sure that there's no conflict between the district plot lines and apartments and the sign footing itself. I've also been made aware by my stormwater department they still not received those review fees, is that correct, James?
Yes.
On this signed site plan, so they will need to receive those before we can proceed with building.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have anyone else here wishing to speak on this case today? Do we have a motion from our board?
Motion.
We have a motion to approve from Mr. Ash. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. All of those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
The next item we have on the agenda, Mr. Chairman, is a site plan for West Elementary School. They're placing, I believe, five portables on the property. This is on one lot, it's on the school property. They are putting them in the approximate location of the current basketball court, and they are relocating to basketball court. With minor technical corrections, staff can recommend approval.
Thank you. Yes, sir, Mr. Ash.
So, Tom, I've never seen something like the portables coming through here before. You probably have some time in your career, but...
They technically do not have to come through our process if they do not wish, because they're considered an equivalent government jurisdiction. But it's courtesy for fusion to come through, so effectively, they're trying to follow the same rules as anybody else.
Still the same guidelines for fire protection, access?
I'm sorry?
Still the same access, fire protection, truck availability can get around these, they're not so tight that they...
Yes, sir. They're still circling the border routes through the property.
And you do recommend approval?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have anyone here wishing to speak on this case today?
Morning, Jake Porter, CSDG, Indian Arrow Project. Just wanted to appreciate the staff always working with us on projects like this. Like you said, unless they have to be here, but it's definitely courtesy that we come forward just to get any comments or questions, that way we can work through it in a joint manner. But we agree with all the staff's comments, and thank you for consideration.
Thank you, sir.
And question for our attorney. I interpreted that correctly.
Yes, you did. They prefer Lakeland same roads as everybody else.
Do we have anyone else here wishing to speak on this case today? Any questions from our board? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve from Ms. Weathers. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Mr. Turner. All of those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Motion carries. Ready for the site plan at the Connect Church parking lot?
Yes, sir. This is a fairly cut-and-drive parking expansion, and with minor technical corrections, staff can recommend renewal. It's part of the 50 church, all these properties.
Anyone here wishing to speak on this case today?
Jake Porter, CSDG, same thing, just engineering side of this, and again, we're integrated with all the comments from staff, and appreciate all the other help, and any questions I can answer, please.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this case today? Do we have any questions from our board?
Since it's a courtesy, I'll have a question for Tom.
This is not a courtesy. This one is a courtesy.
Ah, well, good. So all the quantities required for the occupants within the building are met with head cap as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions from our board?
Does it require payment? Sorry? Does it require being paved?
Yes. There'd be full payment, full strike pay, occur stormwater.
Just for reference, if you're not on, I have to look the language, it's either state highway or major thoroughfare in our requirements, churches do not technically have to pay unless they're on one of those roads that meet those two criteria. In this case, they are paid. They're on state highway. Just as a quote.
State highway paved, county roads, they don't have to pay. Is that what you're saying, hon?
There may be some language about if they reach a certain thoroughfare classification, they have to pay, but in general terms, yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
Motion.
A motion to approve from Mr. Jewell. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Renfro. All of those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Motion carries. We're ready for the final for the Jamie Lee Roddy and Zach Hemantola property on East Richmond Shop Road?
Yes, sir. This is an eight-lot subdivision off East Richmond Shop Road. You saw the preliminary a couple of months ago, I believe. It's zone day one. Agricultural and staff can recommend approval subject to formal stormwater review being completed. I understand stormwater has been in the process of reviewing the property based on preliminary review and comments, and they're still in the process of doing so. There's, you'll recall, there's an amount of pheno map here, but there's a floodplain that comes through this tract that stops somewhere right in here in terms of studied area, but if it were to continue, it would continue down this creek, and there was some concern about it affecting the lots to either side that are being requested. So that's among the things that are studied, to make sure that we don't need to make those critical lots, indoor size culverts along East Richmond Shop Road appropriately. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you. Yes, sir, Mr. Crockett.
Hit Paul Crockett, Crockett, Soroane. I think we've addressed all the planning comments, and as Tom said, we're waiting for the final review from Warren and Associates on the drainage.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this case today? Do we have any questions from our board?
Yes, sir. Mr. Tom, that strip of land on the other side, if you can show it?
Yes, sir.
Very thin. The setback's prohibitive for building anything in there. I couldn't tell width by scale.
Where are you referring to, Mr. Renfro?
Right there, all the way to the left.
Right here?
Oh, wait, wait. See how that little stripper is drawn around? Got tiny little strip on the...
That's just access to the track lines.
Oh, over here?
Yes.
I'm sorry. That's a sliver access to the parent tract. If you'll go to the next slide, I think it'll show what you're actually plating, which are the lots that are below five acres.
Okay.
They're keeping the parent tract intact, and I believe that slivers over here somewhere.
It is, but the setback's prohibitive regardless for any kind of building.
Yes, yes, in the sliver. Yes, sir.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this case today? Any further questions from our board? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve from Mr. Turner. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Ms. Weathers. All of those in favor, vote aye.
Can I get some consideration for that being subject to staff comments and also subject to final engineering review?
That would be up to Mr. Turner. Mr. Turner, you want to include subject staff recommendations in your...
Yes.
We have a motion to approve, subject staff recommendations from Mr. Turner. Mr. Turner, do we have a second?
Second.
A second from Ms. Weathers. All of those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Now ready for the preliminary for Montgomery Estates.
This is a preliminary for subdivision called Montgomery Estates. This is a little bit different than ones we've seen in recent months anyways. It's a proposed 10-lot subdivision. This is Carroll Bend Road. This is Harbor Point subdivision. Go to the next slide if you will. These are the lots they're proposing. Help me out, Christopher, what are the acreage ranges? They're anywhere from 2.3...
The smallest one on Carroll Bend is 2.3 and everything else is 2.3.
So this is a 2.3-acre tract, and all these other tracts are over 3.
There's two of them that are 5-plus.
And there's two of them that are 5-plus, but they're proposing to extend the public road system out of Harbor Point subdivision, two cul-de-sacs that they will then get driveway access to each of the lots they're creating. I did talk to the builder, or developer that's doing this on the front end, and I said, you know, with the size of the lots and everything, I don't think that you've got a huge issue, but I do question whether or not you wouldn't be better off coming in with a construction entrance at the very least. Even if you're going to have your permanent access off Harbor Point subdivision, having a construction entrance coming off of Carroll Bend Road, he at the time was not happy to do so, nor did he feel that we had any means to require him to do so. But just for the record, that's what I want you to...
So what is he doing it, Tom, or what's...
No, he's proposing to do all this construction from those two cul-de-sacs he's constructing.
So he was planning to go through the middle of those houses, cut down a cul-de-sac...
Yes, sir.
And run his construction company, all that stuff through that subdivision.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anyone here wishing to speak on this case today?
My chairman, members of the board.
I didn't do my comments. I apologize.
I apologize, Mr. McFarlane, I'm sorry.
That's my fault. We can recommend approval subject to wean requirement for cul-de-sac being 94-foot pavement and width and with road commission staff occurrence of that. Part of the reason we got to do that is because we just adopted International Fire Code, and the International Fire Code states that cul-de-sacs will be 94 feet. Our subdivision regulation was more the road commission standards, we've caught up with that yet. We currently require, I believe, an 80-foot paved section for the cul-de-sac, so that's something that we've got to work out between the agencies.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, sir.
I apologize.
That's fine. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Jerry McFarlane, Commissioner, District 5, better known as Possible Town. Had to get that in there. I had the privilege of going down and visiting this neighborhood two days ago, late in the afternoon. The house is set about 30 feet off the road, and I live at the setback living on. So when a child comes out the front door of the house, about as far as we're here to where the mayor sits there in the street. When I got there, all I saw was bicycles and children playing, probably more than half of them in the street. It's a dangerous situation to use those cul-de-sac roads, those dead-end roads after construction and/or as additional traffic to it. Can you go back to the first slide, Tom?
Yes, sir.
Uh...
Yeah.
I got one, thank you. The gentleman has, I didn't mean to be sarcastic, I just thought this morning about 4:00 o'clock I'd bring my own.
I can't see it.
Sir?
I can't see it.
God, you can't see anything? Anyway, he has a right-of-way all the way in from Carroll Bend Road. I don't know how wide it is, probably close to a couple hundred feet. There's no reason that that cannot be used as a construction road and a superman road to any house they want to build along here or back in this area here. I mean, roads should be put in. There is water back along these ups, and water could be picked up there, but it's just absolutely too dangerous to use even one of these short roads to go into that when this is available to him, so I had no choice but to ask that you deny this based on the way it's dropped. Any questions for me, sir?
Is that a separate track that goes up to the road, or is that a...
It's the same home.
It's the same. I believe it's all, that's not two separate tracks. I think it is two separate tracks.
It's the same.
It's the same.
Yeah, he owns both of them.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Jennifer Becker, living in a suburb of Harbor Point at 14 acres of Urban Cove. So, good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My house is the second on the right-hand side to the farm. It would be from the end of the farm. What I would also like to ask is that you deny, as these plans are drawn, we have approximately 80 to 84 homes within our subdivision and approximately 50 children within those homes. That's not including grandchildren that visit people. So for us residents, it is a safety concern, as we do not have sidewalks. With our limited lawn space, most of the children do play in the streets. We have several people who walk and run in the neighborhood. It would also be a risk to them to see construction vehicles coming in and out. I guess I have questions of being, since our subdivision is complete with Phase 1 and 2, how many other subdivisions within Wilson County that are complete that our HOA planned development allowed access to something such as this that I would think would probably be zoned as rural residential? So they would be accessing our subdivision without paying the same dues that we are required to pay. Who's going to govern the use of community space to those homeowners if they're accessing through our subdivision? I don't know who could answer those questions for me, but I would love to hear the responses for that. Additionally, the homeowners at 430's of Urban Cove, if they use the cul-de-sac as an entrance and as the construction development, they've not had adequate time to review their deed of trust and to see how far their property extends to the cul-de-sac, so will they be losing part of their acreage in their front lawn? So we are asking that you do deny a strong, we need more time to look at this. We're not asking that the developer not develop on this. I think it's a great idea. We're just asking, don't use our neighborhood. Give us a little bit more respect than that. Also, I do want to point out, as Jerry stated, there is the ingress and egress on Carroll Bend that this gentleman could use to do all of his construction and to allow any future homeowners access to that site.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to take a crack at our questions filed?
I'll do my best, will you? The tract is eligible for far more lots under zoning if they use a public sewer system than what this developer is proposing at present. As I stated, most of the, or all the lots are above, I think, 2.7 acres in this particular proposal. The stubouts that you have at Urban Cove at the end, and the unnamed stubout because it did not warrant a name, only being one lot deep at present, were both designed and installed for the purposes of continuation of development, making it easier to grow. I'll let you speak, but let me finish. So those were, from a planning perspective, required when the Summit Harbor Point subdivision was put in, the stubout for the purposes of, again, allowing connection to potentially developable tracks. Ideally, if, well, not ideally, but if the F P had maximized density, depending on how many lots he got out of it, there may have been a requirement at this point for a secondary connection to Carroll Bend by public roadway. But being that it's less than 100 lots, which is a requirement right now, it's a minimal less than that. We don't have any requirement to require that cross-connection to occur. And secondly, these are public roadways, so they have every right to extend them as long as they pay the letter of credit, go through the road commission approval, and extend those to cul-de-sacs. Now, I still have a problem with my responses I got from the developer with the larger construction traffic. I don't really see, I told him at the time that I thought he was buying himself problems when he didn't otherwise necessarily warrant them, because he is doing a large-lot subdivision in this particular instance, and at the very least, he could take the construction traffic off Carroll Bend by building a construction hall road, off Carroll Bend directly, and building back up that as he went. He stated he did not have any desire to do so. I don't know if he's here or not.
Can I speak to that?
We'll get to you, I promise. And Tom, as far as the cul-de-sac, those numbers are calculated into the proportion of the people's lots. She's asking if they would lose part of their lots because of the cul-de-sac. Those numbers are factored in on the front end, as far as the acreage goes.
Yes, sir. Now, if there's a temporary turnaround there now, they may actually reclaim a portion of that cul-de-sac, because it's had to balled out for a turnaround, and there may be...
Might be additional.
...the possibility for them to, again, deconstruction of the cul-de-sac there since he continued the...
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for the clarification. I still would like to know if that is a temporary cul-de-sac. When our subdivision was developed, it was Phase 1 and Phase 2. That developer, I believe it was Caro 70 Investors, did file bankruptcy.
Yes, sir.
So I don't know if he had the thought that there would be a Phase 3. It would make sense to me if this developer is going to use our subdivision, would it not then become Phase 3?
No, ma'am, not necessarily. But from the, particularly from the standpoint that we would require these stubouts on any potentially developable tract with a significant acreage, we try to, to secure cross-connections so that if there was a significant wreck or something, that there, people have other meetings headed out of property. In this particular case, because he's doing a 10-lot subdivision, we don't have a lot of a requirement for a part of the secondary connection.
So if it was approved, that he did access through our subdivision, what is the dollar amount, or do you have an estimate of the damage that will be done to our roads for all the construction? And will Wilson County then be responsible for fixing those roads?
Those are good questions. The road commission oversees that process. They do require a maintenance letter of credit for designated hall roads for non-construction sites prior to plating of the property. So in addition to having to submit and secure letters of credit and submit those to the road commission for the road work he's doing to extend the roads, he'll also have a maintenance letter of credit for the existing roadways for maintenance and upkeep of those as becomes necessary. And the idea would be that the developer would be on the hook to go back and repair that, but if push came to shove, the road commission could call those credit themselves.
And should he file bankruptcy, also like Caro 70 Investors? What happens?
That's what the letter of credit...
The letter of credit will cut her off.
That road is not responsible in any way to the homeowners association, though it is a county road, as you told me.
It is a county road. It is a county road, but it's not a game community, it's not a private road.
So, he's, he's dealing with the road commission, not with the homeowners association, the developer?
Yes, sir. As far, you asked one other series of questions about the homeowners association. That really is strictly a purview of the HOA to take up with the neighboring developer as to whether they're issued for taking your HOA or the community amenities if they were to take advantage of that or something.
So would those lots and potential homes conform to our neighborhood?
No, they don't have to.
They don't have to.
Now, based on my discussion with him, I don't anticipate that they're going to be significantly different from the types of houses that are in there. But I can't dictate property values, but in my discussions with the gentleman, I believe he mentioned many-dollar homes.
Within this market, that's a little scary. And I also have photos of the cul-de-sac at Zephyr Cove. However, the other access point that he's referred to as Montgomery Lane there is not an existing cul-de-sac. It is just a dead-end road that is blocked by a fence right now. So I don't know if anybody would like to see the photos, but I have four copies that you all have.
And because it was one lot B, the road commission, as I understand it, does not require turnarounds constructed in the same way they did on Zephyr Cove on one side and one lot D.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, first time.
I have a question, Mr. Ash.
Yes, sir, Mr. Ash.
Not just, probably Tom, but in the nine-one-one system, will this become, say, his construction road becomes a street?
Well, it's a construction road right now, as opposed as to come down Harbor Point and I guess that's being called Montgomery Lane, the stubout at Zephyr Cove.
But if we don't approve him coming through the subdivision?
If you don't approve him coming through the subdivision, short of legal action, I think the only option he would have is to construct a road off of K-Roe Bend.
So, so that's my question. So, will those, that'd be a rural mail route? And the reason I say that, because nine-one-one calls come in, I guess we'd have to name that road, that street, right?
He would, he would have to name, he would have to design in a public road off K-Roe Bend, and it would have a public name, and all of those houses would then be addressed off that road. In this case, they're going to be off, I'm assuming Montgomery Lane, which is the shortest stubout, and Zephyr Cove will go have additional addressing.
Tom, how many places do we have a situation like this where access is reasonable from another end like this where construction? How many more do we have like that where we have possibly requested them to make that a street after the completion of the project?
We, we have a few that come up. More often than not, we have some that come up where we're doing kind of what we did with this one, where we're having them stubout to a potential development track to get you eventually back to, in this instance, with them doing a larger lot track that down of eight to ten lots. We just don't have any requirements for them to make that secondary connection like we normally do.
Is it appropriate? Do we have the authority to require that as part of the development?
That would be a question for County Attorney Judy.
He's busy.
As presented, there is no public road coming from K-Roe Bend connecting to this phase of project. Do we have the authority to require him to add a permanent road, county road, from K-Roe Bend up to this project?
Given that he has access to the public road system in other places.
Say that again.
Given that he has access to the public road system in other places.
He has two cul-de-sacs running the property. Okay. Where it widens out up here off of the subdivisions. But he also has a connector tract that ties into the front K-Roe Bend road. So he's proposing a cul-de, a road that's going to end in the cul-de-sac.
He's proposing two cul-de-sacs. Sorry?
Is that going to be a private road?
No. He's proposing two cul-de-sacs off the end of Zephyr Cove and off that stubout, just before it gets narrower.
They're asking if they can require him to build a public road off of K-Roe Bend instead of utilizing the existing public cul-de-sac.
I don't know if I feel comfortable answering that question. I'm going to do a little research for that.
Part of that is also not a permanent road, but a construction access. Is there any latitude we have there to say, do not use what's already existing? You already have a flag entrance off K-Roe Bend.
You've always got to be careful telling a man what he's going to do in his car. So I'd, I'd like to take a little time and look at that. I don't feel comfortable.
So would you recommend we defer until you have a chance?
Y'all, y'all do whatever you want to do. I don't feel comfortable shooting from the hip or nothing.
Let me, Tom, if you have a chance to hear my question more, although you're the nine-one-one attorney also.
Yes, sir.
If he comes in off a main road, what I don't want to happen back here with six, seven, eight, lots, ten, whatever, it'd be, it'd be lot one, lot two, not have proper numbering for mail, and, but it won't be a kiosk on this side, will it?
There will be a mail kiosk for this building.
But, but when, you know what I'm saying, getting those flag lot situations, you don't know which houses the amateurs can go to.
Yeah. What we, what we do in other situations where they're accessed by a company, accessing, but there's several lots, and we give them the number and then A, B, C, D, E, it's not the best way in the world to do it, but that's probably sometimes actually the only way you can do it. Because we, as you know, we number off the public road.
Yep. That's, that's, we're putting another road off the public road.
Yeah.
This is not dissimilar to some discussion you may recall with Irving Ridge subdivision in the neighborhood that went through their neighborhood for access.
Do we have anyone else here wishing to speak on this case today? Yes, sir, if you would, please come forward.
Everybody, my name's Thomas Hopkins, I'm the applicant. I just wanted to address what Mr. Bashir had said. I had met with him and Mr. Lawless. They mentioned a construction easement. I told him I was going, the plan would be to sell lot one off K-Roe Bend Road first, but there's actually an easement that runs below this property to that forty-two acres in the back. So Matt Taylor, my engineer from S E C, couldn't make it today. He actually resubmitted plans to those guys the end of last week showing a construct, using that as a construction easement that would go back there, and then that would handle the traffic on lots two through six and that cul-de-sac. So I just wanted to address that that has been resubmitted to you guys. And I haven't, I haven't heard that said here today yet, so...
We're looking at files, but we're not aware of it right now.
I've got it on email, on two different emails that he sent it, so I just wanted to say that we, again, Mr. Bashir, he's right. When he first, when we first talked, I was like, the public road, it's only nine lots, but I get it, I understand the concerns. But at the same time, so we have come back, addressed it with, there is a construction easement, so I just, I wanted to say that for the record, that that has been resubmitted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any, any other questions? Be glad, I, again, my engineer's not here.
You don't have any future plans of going through a cul-de-sac?
No, sir.
No, sir. Not there. He's still proposing to add...
Yeah, that would just be where the, you know, the driveways would come off on these cul-de-sacs.
What he's proposing is a construction entrance from a different location.
Yes, it would come off K-Roe Bend, that would take care of the construction traffic. But again, you know, when the houses get built and people live there, they, they would come off the cul-de-sac. So...
Thank you.
Okay.
Please.
As he mentioned, I'm with S E C, I'm John Minor. Matt Taylor couldn't make it here today. But yes, as he said, we do have plans to...
I know you like to.
Yeah, no, you're good. To, yeah, I was hiding in the back. And it is noted on the flat that the construction, all construction for lots one through six will come through K-Roe Road. And the reason that it wasn't extended back farther is essentially because of the soils. Where the construction entrance would be located to go through those remaining four lots would basically go through the soil area and make, make those non-buildable lots. That, that's the reasoning behind it.
Go to the next slide if you will. So which lots would not be served by a construction entrance?
Yes, seven, eight, nine, and ten.
Those four?
Correct.
So you would be constructing...
One, two, three, four, five, and six.
Here, from K-Roe Bend.
Correct. Yes, sir.
But you're still going to end up running construction traffic through the neighborhood to get to these four?
Yes, for the, the last four.
And you've not, y'all, your staff hadn't laid eyes on this, right, Tom? Or haven't had time to deal with it? Whether you got it or not, I understand. I understand.
And then can I address a couple of the other comments? We are going with the ninety-six-foot cul-de-sac to make the fire code, and then...
Subject to road commission's step today.
Correct, correct. And then, as it was, as you stated earlier, none of the property, the existing properties would lose any, any, any of their property. By extending the cul-de-sac, we are continuing from the existing right-of-way to our property with, with the road or the cul-de-sac. And as he stated, on the temporary, depending on how it was, which I don't know offhand, they could, could gain access to that, that temporary turnaround portion. And then, as it was kind of stated, the responsibility for road maintenance during construction, since we are going through the development for the last four lots, there will be a bond in place, and it will be the developer's responsibility to maintain it during construction.
It'll be a letter of credit.
Correct. Letter of credit, excuse me. Letter of credit, and if, for whatever reason, as, as there was concern about if they went bankrupt, left, or any other option, the letter could be pulled and the money is already, would already be in place to, for the county to basically fix, fix the roads if it was damaged.
Thank you.
Tom, are you clear on all this?
No.
I move that we defer this. I know they're wanting to work, but I just feel better if everybody got on the same page. Mike had a chance to research that other issue and bring this up next month. I make that motion.
Sir?
Well...
We have, we have what we've got here. We have a motion for Mr. Jewell to defer to the next meeting.
Yes.
And we have a second from Mr. Thompson. All those in favor of vote aye. Those opposed, we will continue this for thirty days, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we're...
Yes, sir.
Next item is Autumn Breach, Autumn Breach subdivision, phases two through four, twenty-six-hundred South Mount Gilligan Road. This is in the western Dime Weather District, ninety-nine parcel eighty-eight, eighty-eight point oh-three, consists of thirty-seven lots. Again, this is a preliminary flat approval with my technical corrections staff can recommend approval, subject to the weaver requirement of cul-de-sac that's, I was thinking that was ninety-four, ninety-six feet, that says ninety-four feet, I may have that wrong. Anyways, it's the new ICC requirement for cul-de-sac with, famous with road commission staff in current because the road commission is the one that ought to have to maintain whatever cul-de-sac is put in there. Late utility district comments, included in previous discussions with the developer and design consultant for this project, the district has made it very clear that as a requirement for providing water service to the project, the water line will have to be extended off-site to the north and connected to an existing water line at Frederickburg Drive. This connection is mandatory, and the appropriate easements within the Autumn Breach subdivision, i.e. along the common boundary line between lots thirteen and fourteen in the current configuration, will be required to facilitate off-site work. And then it says on July twenty-eighth, through twenty-twenty-two, a document of agreement is issued to the developer and design consultant, but the agreement has never been executed and no payments were paid. The document is now void, and a revised developer agreement must be requested by the developer or design consultant. And this is all the flaky utility district business. As with all projects in the district service area, the developer must meet the current requirements of the district in regard to the provision of water service to this phase of development.
Yes, sir, Mr. Ry.
Mike Ry, we're Loews Designer, University of Universal Builders. The real purpose for this plant, it was to add lots, there are three, there are three additional lots on this preliminary that were not achievable due to sanitary sewer capacity at the time. Mr. Libric, I believe he's here, could add some, add some color there, but basically there was a permitting that had to be done due to increased capacity. That's been done, so we're back to subdivide that one large lot.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this case today? We have any questions from our board?
Tom, lot thirteen and fourteen that you just read, is at the end of the red enclosed area, right before...
I believe so.
So those people that exist, their homes are there?
He's somewhere near.
Yes. And there was homes there, right?
No, not, I don't think there's homes there at present. There's lots.
Looked like they were homes, aren't they? Let me go see them.
Those are in Frederickburg. There's a road right here.
Oh, I see, I see.
And the water line would go down.
Okay.
No, there's not a road there.
Well, there's a, there's, there's either a private road or a not-approved public road. One of the two.
Thanks, sir.
We have any other questions from our board? We have a motion.
Motion to approve?
A motion to approve, subject to recommendations from Ms. Weathers.
Sir.
Second from Mr. Ash. All those in favor of vote aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. And just for clarity, Tom, that flat would have to be signed by the utility district before it could actually be recorded and dealt with.
Yes, sir.
So they'll have to deal with those issues, Mr. Ry?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay.
I can't speak to Mr. Ry, but I'll tell you, we will not accept the flat unless Scott Blake has signature on it.
You're going to work your stuff out with Blake with utility district? That was my question. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we have the following flats for affirmation. We have a subdivision of Carl W. Wright property on Loma Road, in District Thirteen, Commissioner Jerry Hobbs' district, consisting of one lot, and is referenced as map one-twenty-two, part of parcel eleven, is under one. We have a re-subdivision of Frank Oliver Estate, lots fourteen A and fourteen B, on Colsbury Pike in District Five, Commissioner Jeremy Carlson's district, consisting of one lot, and referenced as map thirty-five, parcel six, and six-point-oh-one, zone day one. Re-subdivision of the Ruby Hasty property on lot one in Linwood, Roanoke area, in District Seven, Commissioner Terry Scruggs' district, consisting of one lot, and referenced as map one-oh-six, parcel twenty-five-point-zero-one, and being zone day one, agricultural. Re-subdivision of the James Mann property on West Salisbury Road, in District Fifteen, Commissioner Chris Dowell's district, consisting of one lot, and being referenced as map eighty-five, parcel twenty-point-zero-four, being zone day one, agricultural. Subdivision of Robert Van Hooter Jr. property on Horn Springs Road, in District Seventeen, Commissioner Russell Keats' district, consisting of one lot, and being referenced as map forty-six, parcel thirty-seven, is zone R one. Re-subdivision of the Gerald Blair property, consisting of one lot, on Atkinson Road, being in District Twelve, Commissioner Haskell Evans' district, referenced as map one-fourteen, parcel twenty-four-point-zero-one, being zone day one. Re-subdivision of the Gerald Blair property, lot two, on Atkinson Road, in District Twelve, which is Commissioner Haskell Evans' district, consisting of one lot, and being referenced as map one-fourteen, parcel twenty-four-point-zero-two. Subdivision of the Lynn Carlton Wright property on Bluewell Road, within District Nine, Commissioner Blake Hollis' district, consisting of one lot, and being referenced as map one-forty-four, parcel fifty-two, is zone day one. And subdivision of Janice Stewart property on Trailhead Berry Park, Pike, District Fifteen, Commissioner Chris Dowell's district, consisting of one lot, being referenced as map sixty-four, parcel twenty-seven-point-oh-three, being zone day one. Re-subdivision of the Bob McCrery property, consisting of two lots, being further referenced as forty-six-point-nineteen McCrery Road, in District Thirteen, Commissioner Jerry Hobbs' district, Jeremy Hollis' district, referenced as map one-forty-one, parcel eighteen-point-zero, and zone day one. Subdivision of Judith Kemp property, consisting of two lots, being referenced as sixty-two-point-oh-one Old Marcus World Road, in District Twelve, Commissioner Haskell Evans' district, and being further referenced as map one-fourteen, parcel thirty-five-point-zero-four, and being zone day one. Subdivision of the G L R Revocable Trust property and George W. Robertson property at thirty-seven-twenty Beloaksberry Road, within District Six, Commissioner Beth Bowman's district, again, it's two lots, and it's referenced as map fifteen, parcel sixteen, and sixteen-point-oh-two, and zone day one. And a combination flat for Caleb Thorn property, it's Thorn Consolidation Flat, as a label, consisting of one lot at Miss Tila Drive and North Street, and being referenced as map sixty-D, parcel, group C, parcel twenty-eight. And this is again in District Six, Commissioner Beth Bowman's district, and is zone day one. And this is again in District Six, Commissioner Beth Bowman's district, in zone day one. All of those flats are one or two lot subdivisions that have met staff approval, as permitted by state law and this planning commission, through policy, to go through a staff approval process. So we have been reviewing those, and all of those, these staff comments come very close to that, too, and we won't report until they're good.
You've been busy this morning.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone here today wishing to speak on any of these cases? Do we have any questions from our board? Do we have a motion?
Some moved.
A motion to approve subject by Mr. Jewell. Do we have a second?
Sure.
We have a second from Mr. Rick. All those in favor, vote aye.
Right.
And those opposed, motion carries. We'll now revert back to the policy changes, Tom.
Okay. And you want me to do the informational one?
If you'll do the informational one.
For informational purposes, no vote being required by this board, or by this planning commission. The Wilson County Commission, at the Monday, February twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three, being approved Resolution twenty-three dash two dash ten, which was a resolution adopting the twenty-two-one, twenty-twenty-one addition of the International Building Code, which is, I understand, is the most up-to-date international building code in its entirety. The International Residential Code, the international, which the International Residential Code, we already have an adopted version, by doing this, we moved up to the twenty-twenty-one version of the IRC. And by state law, we're required to stay, I believe, in either five or six years of the most current code. So that puts us in good stead with the code validity. The International Fire Code was also adopted, in addition to the International Fire Protection Agency, or National Fire Protection Agency, NFPA one-oh-one, like safety code, otherwise references NFPA dash one-oh-one. The International Plumbing Code, IPC, the International Mechanical Code, IMC, the International Fuel and Gas Code, IFC, and the International Energy Code, which is IDCC. And all of those, I believe, were attached to your agenda. Effectively, what this means is that we have officially adopted commercial codes in Wilson County, which we have not previously adopted. In addition, we've adopted fire protection codes. And you've already seen some product of that, with the potential expansion of cul-de-sac with, that we're going to need to address eventually in our subdivision regulations and road commission standards, if we choose to continue to follow that particular requirement.
This will establish, this will establish the fire marshal program also on.
My understanding is WEMA is in the process of getting staff in place to undertake fire marshal review of new commercial buildings, as well as residential. They've already been doing some residential reviews, but they will ramp up that review as well with this fire marshal.
Is that subject to funding by the county commission, or is it-
I believe so.
It's a good thing to do, I think.
I believe they funded it last, last year, in some form or fashion.
You were there.
Tom, maybe this is a little preemptive, but will that program operate out of your department or out of WEMA?
Well, it will operate out of, the fire marshal's position specifically, or fire inspection, fire review will operate out of WEMA. However, as it's been done in other places I have worked, including Hendersonville and some other places, on commercial stuff in particular, the fire marshal and my building inspections office, with whomever we've got designated to do the commercial building inspections, with their certifications, will go out in hand on, both to review the plans but also the review onsite. Generally, they do that at the same time, to kind of keep, from one of them saying to do this, and then they do that, and then the other one needs to just done first or something. So they try to work this, see it hand in hand.
Yes, sir.
Do you have questions? Not to Mr. Ash. Okay. Okay, that was for informational purposes. Let's move on to the zoning change.
Okay. The other item, I'm going to pass something out. The, the resolution itself has the proposed changes. I also gave you this last night in an email of your packet information. But this, this handout has the current standards with the proposed standards behind it, just in terms of breakdown. This is the same thing I shared with the Planning and Zoning Committee at their request to look into this, Planning and Zoning Committee, and the committee of the county commission. And effectively, what this is doing after some over years of various requests coming across, and looking into the density allowances that we allow in our residential zones, from different county commissioners over the years, coupled with the land use plan, I guess I slipped front of my work. What I was saying was, this amendment comes after several years of various county commissioners asking me to look into the density allowances that we allow in our residential zone districts, coupled with the original land use plan, public input meetings that we've had for this current cycle of amending our land use plan, which is on hold, as you understand, due to the urban growth boundary negotiations ongoing with the city of Mount Juliet, City of Lebanon, City of Locktown, and the county. Because that's on pause, and given additional requests by county commissioners to look into these density counts that we allow in our different residential zone districts, we did draft a resolution that effectively changes those. And those changes are the follows. One of the big things that we've heard from at least one county commissioner over the years is that they did not like the differential in the R-one district for public sewer versus septic provision. Right now, in the A, in the R-one district, we would allow twenty-five thousand square foot lots if you've got more than one lot you're creating, on public sewer. And public sewer could include stasis. If you're not on public sewer, then you default to a septic lot size requirement, which is forty thousand square feet. However, there is a provision that the state of Tennessee, if they find good enough soils, can allow thirty thousand square foot lots in the R-one district. That differential's caused confusion to me over the years. As we have grown as a region, people have become more growthy, and that coupled with some of that confusion, has led us to believe that it's probably time for us to do away with that differential, whatever size that you choose to make the R-one district. But the R-one district, as proposed, we just went across the board and made a forty thousand square foot minimum lots. In an effort to try to maintain some hierarchy in the districts, we also proposed changing the A-one district from a current forty thousand square foot lot, which is just shy of an acre, forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet. In the A-one zone district, we chose to make the minimum requirement, rather than being forty thousand square feet like it would be in R-one if this were passed, we chose to make that eighty thousand square feet, which is a little bit shy of two acres. And this is just in general terms. We have an A-two district that is not used, there's not any A-two zoned on the ground, but we did create that district several years ago, at the request of some who had expressed an interest in having an agricultural preservation district. The current zoning requirement for that district is a minimum of two acre lots. This would push it to four acre lots for the A-two district. That being said, that we don't have any A-two that I'm aware of on the ground.
That's what you brought forward and called estate, estate lots, correct?
Yeah, yeah. But we don't have any of that present. Number one has chosen to rezone to that. The, on the, going downward in terms of density, R-two has caused us some confusion as staff over the years, and if we're going to do this, I want to take the opportunity to get it cleaned up. One of the things in particular, R-two allows multi-family development, as used by rights. However, the general provision requires that it goes through a group housing procedure that makes them go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. The Board of Zoning Appeals really is not a body that is accustomed to reviewing site development plans or residential development plans for that matter. So typically, what would happen when we had, very seldom, some mills for multi-family development in the R-two district, is they would go to the Board of Zoning Appeals, there's a public hearing at the Board of Zoning Appeals, and maybe the public gets a chance to come and express their concerns or questions or story. But at the same time, the Board of Zoning Appeals would typically throw their hands up and say, well, we're not the board that does any technical review, so we're going to refer that to the planning commission. So give it referred back to y'all. Y'all have to make a technical review of it, it then goes back to the Board of Zoning Appeals. And me being honest, generally by that point, the board was withdrawn and decided to do something else. So I, to, to that point, I have not had a new R-two multi-family zoning done since I got here in two thousand and eleven, because it's just an organic, weird process. So, that being said, I took our multi-family out of the R-two district, because that's not how we use. I put it in R-three. R-three zoning is a planned residential development district, and what that does, that does two things. One, it's a much more clear-cut review process. Secondly, because there's, there's only a few R-three properties out on the ground, it would require most every one of those that choose to get developed as multi-family, out in the county, not in the cities, to go through a rezoning process with a master plan. And it gives the county commission something that they've been asking for, which is additional control over those higher density developments. That being said, we haven't had any to speak of unless there were annexations in recent years into cities. So anyways, we did that, we did the current single-family allowance in R-two, which we have had some development in, is ten thousand square feet. Again, in response to us increasing the overall lot size in the other districts, we did increase the single-family lot size to twenty thousand square feet, proposed to. It does allow two-family dwellings, and those would be on a thirty thousand square foot lot, whereas right now, they can put them on a fifteen thousand square foot lot. In short, that's, that's sort of what, what's going on there. There is a section in the resolution that also talks about planning to development. We had to amend those densities as well, because, as you can see on the, probably the second page back, the top of the page is the current density allowances, which is R-one allows one point seven square units per acre as rule, and with, if they do a planning to development, they get a point-two-six bonus acreage per lot, or, per development. And in R-two, it's currently four point-three-six units per acre with a point-one-four density bonus. And that's to offset some of the additional costs the developer has to take on in the process of doing a planning and development. In the, in the proposed amendment, those densities would decrease to a base density of one point zero nine units per acre. In R-one, in R-two, it would be two point one eight units per acre, with point-three-five and point-three-two density bonuses. And the last page, it just wouldn't fit on this page, the acre, if you took a hundred acre development, which is the minimum residential budget, the difference in density bonus at current, you get twenty additional lots allowed in R-one, you get eleven additional lots allowed in R-two. As proposed, you can get twenty-six additional lots in R-one, and twenty-four additional lots in R-two, if someone chose to come in and play.
These last two pages, just making the math work, what you're proposing in there.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Does all this proposal still doesn't affect five acres?
No, it does not. And nor does it affect anything that has preliminary planning development, or something that the Home Builders Association got passed three to five years ago, which anybody that's got a preliminary planning development in place, they got anywhere from two to five, or five to fifteen years vested rights. So if they've already got a plan in here, they would be allowed to continue that plan as long as they don't allow it to expire beyond whatever that vesting is, and I'm going to have to, if this passes, that'd be one of those things, I'll be confirming with county attorney about how, how to administer that on the existing developments that we've got. So anybody that's already submitted and got approval for any type of preliminary planning development, I would, I would interpret that to mean any re-zoning with a FUD, any, any sketch, preliminary, or final plan, that's already been approved, and even if it's not been approved, it has vested rights and a pancreas that we've reviewed and approved. This would just be new, new developments that start from scratch. And again, I think in large part, over the past fifteen years, what's grown extraordinarily. While that's being said, we account for approximately, we in the county, in our corporate area, account for approximately fifteen percent of our overall residential housing development cost, whether we're in a, in a high development cycle, or whether we're in a low, or a high and low development cycle. We rock along between twelve and fifteen percent of the housing permits, county law, meaning that, what is that, about eighty-five percent of them are in City of Mount Juliet, City of Lebanon, and City of Locktown. Truthfully speaking, Lebanon and Mount Juliet are present.
Now, if I understand this correctly, this came out of the Planning and Zoning Committee of County Commission?
Yes.
For us to review and to make a recommendation to the entire county commission?
That's right.
And maybe we'll have to find a say so.
Yes.
Okay.
Now, it can, ordinances can start here or there. This one was requested of members of the county commission to discuss the Planning and Zoning Committee, and that's robust.
Okay.
Now, because of that, once they receive your recommendation, it'll go to the county commission, I would anticipate, one way or the other.
Okay. I'm going to open this up for public comment. I am going to ask you to keep your comments brief, less than two minutes, and try not to be repetitive in nature. I know a lot of people want to speak on this, we want everyone to have the opportunity to be heard. Yes, sir?
I'm David Yost, and I've lived in the Statesville community for forty-four years, so I've been able to see the growth in the southeastern part of the county. I love the idea of going from forty thousand to eighty thousand square feet for the lots in the A-one area. Okay, I'm not going to talk about the other areas of the county, but A-ones. We're basically losing the character of our area down there, in the southeast corner, because of the amount of development that's taken place. And I strongly support going from forty thousand to eighty thousand for developments that are going through the planning commission in the A-one area. I think it's probably not enough, okay? I do not know the zoning laws, and it sounds like A-two is a possibility of getting, or zoning changed, but I'll let y'all comment on that. There's another thing I'd like to bring up, is that as of right now, and it looks like it's all across the state, that five acres, if you have a five acre lot, you don't even run that through the planning commission.
That's correct.
And I would like to see somebody take a look at that as well, because there's a lot of development taking place where I don't think the planning commission, or for that matter, codes are looking at hard enough. Because they're putting in houses in places, and floods are near flood zones, or flood zones that are not identified as being flood zones. A good example of that is in my area at Night Creek. There's a gentleman in there right now that is trying to develop the property, and the recent rain event that we had two weeks ago would have flooded out the bridge, and I've got some great pictures of that, by the way, would have flooded the area where he's planning on putting things in. Now, that, that part of Night Creek has not been examined for flood plans. So we need to take a more serious look at this, so that, you know, we don't end up with, with houses in flood zones in that area. And that's all I've got.
Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone else wishing to speak on this today? Yes, sir?
While he's coming up, I will respond to a couple of things. The A-two zone, the reason that we don't have it on the ground is because we really don't have the authority to own property of someone else's at this point, given changes in state law, unless we notify every affected property owner in the county, which is, I think, over fifty-two thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven parcels by mail.
But that don't include density changes?
No, it doesn't, because you're changing language in the zoning order itself. If I was to assign a new zoning district to somebody else's property, in my opinion. The, the A-two would be at the volition of the homeowner or property owner to apply to it. The, the other thing I'll mention out in rural areas, there are certain provisions in state agricultural laws that do require farmers not to necessarily have to get permits, even for homes that are associated with the agricultural use. However, if they do that, we're not going to inspect them either for codes, so if they've got to get any type of bank on that, that may cause them problems through the finances, and they can't get codes inspections without paying for a permit. finances, and they can't get codes inspections without paying for them.
Okay. Yes, sir?
Good morning. Reidy Sexton with Landmark Homes of Tennessee. Just a question, actually, just a point of clarification from Tom. Tom, on table one, it's, you're talking about 40,000 square foot lots for R1. In table two, you're talking about a density of 1.09. Is the 1.09 only achievable if it's a PUD application?
No, actually, unless my math's wrong, uh, that's used by, 1.09 would be used by right. It would be if you wanted to exercise the additional density, which is, you know, the 1.44.
Okay, so it would be the .35 in addition to the 1.09?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And same for the R2 with the 2.18? If there was a PUD application, would we could achieve a 2.50 versus the 40,000 square foot lot?
Well, R2 will allow, uh, single-family will allow 20,000 square foot lot if this passes.
With sewer and water?
Yes.
But with the step system?
Well, that would be a step system as well, probably.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
We have anyone else wishing to speak on this case, this court's change? Yes, sir?
Hello. My name is Mike Burke, and I live at 2448 West Clay Drive. I just have a couple of comments to make. So I think there's a philosophical question going through Middle Tennessee as to how many houses we need, density, and of course, migration trends. And I just wanna point out a couple of things with respect to the impacts of downzoning in general. They cause less tax revenue while also increasing costs of services and maintenance because of all the sprawl that's caused by downzoning. In addition to that, more impacts to natural features, to open spaces, and to affordability are also considerations that need to be taken into account. And while many people think that this will achieve what essentially is, and which would, which are some wants, which is essentially a moratorium on development and population migration, et cetera, it, it's not the case. It's gonna do more harm than good. And while I have two last comments, this, this process feels to be fast-tracked, so I would just urge this commission and the government of Wilson County to take a little bit more time to study this, and ask for a lot more public input, not just in this form, but through stakeholder meetings and such. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Respectfully, I will respond with fast track. We've, we've been discussing density in Wilson County pretty much since I got here, particularly with regard to the deferential in, in one particular zoning district, being the R1, back and forth. While I agree with him that more spread-out development does result in longer road stretches that can be maintained by county, developed by county road commission and other agencies, maybe harder for Landmark and Mercy Services to get to, and things like that, that do cost additional money, I don't necessarily agree that out in the county, that it's always wise to put more people out in a remote area of the county where we don't have adequate infrastructure to serve them, just for the tax revenue, because we're just sort of dog chasing its tail. There's also some wisdom for trying to encourage development where the infrastructure exists. There are some places in the county and corporate area that have better infrastructure than others, and it's my belief that our current land use plan, as much criticism as people have lodged at it...
Say that again, Tom.
It's my belief that, that our current land use plan, as much criticism as people have lodged at it, has made attempts to centralize some of the areas that we're encouraging density versus those where we're not, for the purposes of trying to put them where we've got better infrastructure than not, and also encouraging commercial development, which is where we actually do, as a county government, get ahead on tax revenues. But that being said, there still remains this logic that you want to encourage development where you have the best shot at service. In this case, many times, it is closer into our existing cities. Not all of it, again, we'll still have some areas out of the county that will encourage additional density as we adopt a new land use plan, and that'll certainly be a consideration going forward. But given those points, along with longstanding ongoing negotiations about what the right density is for Wilson County, in conjunction with the extraordinary amount of growth that all of Middle Tennessee has seen, but in particular, Wilson County, in the past five to six years in particular, I think what you're finding is a constituency that's responding to our elected officials, that they're just feeding the growth. And while I may agree or disagree with some of the points on adequate traffic flow and other things, it still doesn't change their perception. I learned this in a marriage class a long time ago, someone's perception is their reality. So that's, that's sort of where I lent it and developed the ordinance at the request of several county commissioners.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this today? Mr. Luber?
Yeah, Chris Luber, the executive director for one of the wastewater authority of Wilson County. My comments will be brief, or maybe others here wanna comment. The zoning modifications as proposed will encourage the use of conventional septic systems maintained by individual homeowners, which when failed, discharges untreated sewage in the homeowner's yard. Versus existing zoning encourages developers to install publicly maintaining wastewater collection and treatment facilities, presently step systems that we provide. We can provide other types of treatment technologies, but presently step systems, which treat the TDEC permit limits, and discharges clean effluent into approved land application areas. If you have any questions, I'd be pleased to address those. Thank you, I appreciate the opportunity to comment.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak on this today? Yes, sir?
Hello, I'm Frank Blount. I noticed that I know almost everyone here with gray hair. I don't know what that says to me or you either one.
Depends your color, dude.
I'm here representing the group of professionals who work a lot with first-time homeowners. But in addition to that, this is an issue that on both sides is very near and dearly. And I might push a little bit the limits of Mr. Jones's request, but I wanna address these issues. This proposal will work in that if you desire to reduce density in Wilson County, it will accomplish that goal. What has not been addressed is at what cost and who will pay the cost of that. And that's what I will address, because I know most of you, and I know your backgrounds and your family roots, and that you care about your grandchildren and your nieces and nephews, and the cost to them will be far greater than the cost to you. You all now know that developing 1,200 to 1,500 square foot starter homes in this county is now non-existent. That doesn't occur. Not in the county, not in R1 districts. Now, your starter home goes to the 2,500 square foot limit, and the very best information available is that the new homes are running approximately $500,000 in Wilson County. When you decrease or increase the lot requirements by 30 or 40%, there is going to be an increase in the cost of lots. I think that's common sense, that we can all understand that. So the cost of the whole development has to be spread upon fewer lots. That's simple. And that's gonna increase the cost of lots. But that is a fairly minor cost to be passed on, because what happens when you get bigger lots, and you get more expensive lots, is they no longer build the smaller home that would have accommodated the less expensive lot. So as the lots get bigger and more expensive, the size of the houses that, and most of our houses are built by tract builders now, we, we know that, they're the ones who develop land, they're going to build bigger homes. From the very best and most accurate information I can get, this change alone will carry the average starting price for a home from a half million to between 625,000 and 750,000 dollars. And to follow my logic, you know, if you've got a more expensive lot, you build a more expensive home. And if it's a thousand-square-foot home at $200 a square foot, you can see how the price is, is going to go up exponentially. And quite frankly, more than just creating a higher-grade house, we may be creating, frankly, in Williamson County, that becomes a Mecca for estate homes. Bigger lots, more aesthetically pleasing, and they could very well be the million-to-3 million dollar homes that are there. And so I ask each of you to look at who bears the cost of that. It is not me. It is not Mr. Ricketts. It is not Mr. Jones or Mr. Ash. I know these gentlemen have farms and land as well as I do. And if I'm gonna give my child a few acres to build a house, it's not gonna matter. But as we get away from our family into extended family and the other fam, most of the families who are not so blessed in Wilson County, that is not going to be the case. Now, people who come here, who sell homes in California and New York and New Jersey for two and $3 billion, it will not impact them at all. They will walk in here with a bankroll of $3 billion and be able to buy whatever house is on these more restrictive lots. But will your children be able to do that? Will your grandchildren be able to do that? Will your nieces and nephews be able to do that? So where are they gonna live? Well, I love my lifestyle. I mean, my daddy said he worked his self-to-death get-off farm, and I've worked my self-to-death paper, wanting to get back on it. And I love it. And I want my children to have a yard. But the effect of this, the cost of this, could very well be, I won't tell you where they can afford their homes in the cities. Multi-family housing, condos, lots as low as 3,000 square feet that they can do in the cities on sewer, that's where we will be putting our kids and our grandchildren and our nieces and nephews, where there is affordable housing, not at the lifestyle that we want them to have. Because as the lots go up, the houses go up, and only outsiders probably, selling from higher-priced home areas, may well be able to afford that. And this is the cost of this proposal. And the cost to me outweighs the aesthetic benefits. What do I mean by that? I got a nice farm, I got a nice house, I'll be honest, I'm not trying to hide that. And a bigger, nicer home built next door to me will look better. My neighbor will look better. But I'm not sure they're gonna be better neighbors, because I don't think they'll be your kids and my kids and our nieces and nephews. This will put, I thought, heard someone talking about how far the house was from the road. Well, drive to some of these places in the city where there will be affordable housing on 3,000 square foot lot. Now, that's if they're lucky. Now, that's a single-family home on a 3,000 square foot lot. Most of them aren't gonna be that way, all right? There're gonna be condos and apartments. How close are they gonna be to be planning a street? That's what your affordable housing is gonna look like for people from here who aren't selling houses in New York and New Jersey. You know, we... It makes sense. Lord, I'd love our county to be like it was. But this is gonna slow growth and destroy opportunities for the people that are already here. Where 1,500, 1,200, 50 square foot starter homes in R1 districts where you have to develop or have been gone, with this 2,500 square foot starter homes are gonna be gone. And they are going to disappear, and they're not gonna have a yard. R1 already has limits on it. There's a limited amount of R1. You don't have to rezone more. I know you don't rezonate, but it probably goes to view someone else. We have things in place. The people who work in this field, the people that I know, want you just to have the information of what the real cost is, of what sounds like a wonderful idea, to have less density. I wish it was less density in my area, I'd buy more places to run cows, but I can't do it. But I do want my children and my grandchildren to live in Wilson County and not in the city. And it is that information that we ask you to consider, the cost of lower density, because it's real, these numbers are real, and we're pricing us out as pricing insiders in. Thank you very much. I'll answer any questions you have, anybody about that space.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir?
My name is John Shealy. I'm the executive vice president for the Home Builders Association of Middle Tennessee. In the interest of Brody, we're just gonna endorse everything the previous speaker said.
Thank you, sir.
I will, I will add one caveat that's going on our industry. Our children and grandchildren may very well live in a single-family home, but they'll be renting it. And that's happening now, and we're driving prices up, investors are coming and buying entire neighborhoods. So unless we can start producing single-family homes that are affordable to median-income families, this is what we're, this is the legacy we're leaving our children.
I have a question for Mr. Shealy. As a part...
Uh-oh.
How do you propose that we control who buys up those properties and, and develop some low-density to, for sale instead of rental? Because we cannot do, we cannot control that.
The way you control it is, the way you control it is through quantity, is through just simply having. This was not a problem, if you go back 30 years. My first house, 1,900 square feet, a little over a fifth of an acre, vinyl on all, horse eyes, front entry garage, it was $119,000. Median income back then was 48,000. Now median income, median income is 60,000, and our, our median home price is somewhere shy of 300. So the, the investors see this. They see people cannot afford to qualify for these homes, so they're buying them and renting them. And that's, you know, as far as controlling the transaction, you can't. But you can control the supply, and that's what's been limited, through good intention, you know, ordinances, but that's exactly what's happening everywhere.
My question back to you would be, you can provide more supply, but there's nothing to keep those investors from buying those up as well, which is what we perceive to be happening.
There's always gonna be a tipping point, where all of a sudden investors say, I can't make a return on my investment. Right now, they can make a return on their investment. People are willing to rent these houses, because they don't wanna live in a town though. You know, they wanna have a yard where they can throw the ball. So it's, I just want, it's not just Wilson County, everywhere this is going on. But we've gotta start, you know, looking at that, saying, how can we produce affordable housing, housing affordable to median-income buyers, like we did 30 years ago? And the only real difference is the regulatory environment that developers face in trying to get a large project approved.
My asking, my asking a question.
Yes, sir, Mr. Ash.
Tell your name again.
John. Call me John.
And you represent the Builders Association?
Yes, sir.
What impact do you think you have on the, the laypeople who work in, in this industry? Is this gonna cause some of them, if you build as many houses, so you don't need as many electricians, you don't need as many plumbers? I mean, this thing has unintended consequences. Am I right or wrong?
Well, you know, every regulation has unintended consequences, and that is one of them as well. I think, I would use an example of another county, Gheeum County, many years ago passed a very large privilege tax. And what they basically did is wiped out their, their homegrown building industry, their, their lumberyards, their builders, their developers, and all the subs. And so, yeah, when you, we... I, I'm reluctant to say that overall, throughout all of Middle Tennessee, and I think this is something we agree with planners on, there's gonna be a certain number of homes built, regardless of the regulation. It's a question of who owns them and where are they? And I think the where are they is what he's hitting on, is are we gonna be a sea of rooftops all the way through Wilson County? When I say sea of rooftops, rooftop every 400 yards, 800 yards, you know? Or are we gonna allow density where it needs to be? So... So that's, that's what we're doing. I don't know if that answers your question.
No, I was just thinking about sales tax revenue from, I buy them all, I'm flexible, I don't care who knows.
Thank you.
But they, they'll sell less building packages. And that'd be less sales tax revenue. I'm just...
I wish I had known that's what you're going for, because, yeah, what we deal with is people say, well, you know, we build this house that pays so little in property tax. And they just completely forget about sales tax, where that is a huge multiplier of every house. And we all say, well, we sure would like this retail place to move in because they're going to pay us sales tax, when in reality, the retail place is moving in because of the residential that's right there next to it.
So we also have an adequate facilities tax. And that's going to cut the revenue on that.
Yes, it will. But it'll hit your sales tax hard.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I do have housing start numbers for the last four fiscal years and last four fiscal years and seven months. The last four fiscal years, in the Wilson County unincorporated area, we had fifteen hundred and eighty-seven homes that were started, brand new own, not replacements or anything else. And that would be any type of unit, duplex, manufactured home, anything else. That accounts for fourteen point nine percent of all housing starts in Wilson County over the last four fiscal years. Over the last four fiscal years and seven months, that number has dropped to fourteen point six percent with seventeen hundred and ninety homes in the Wilson County unincorporated We did recently consider, the county commission, at least the county commission, not we, the county commission did consider doubling our adequate facilities tax for a period of time for residential growth. They opted not to do that. Had they done that, that would have affected a hundred percent of our growth. What this ordinance does affects roughly twelve to fifteen percent. And what I was going to tell you, in the last seven months, just this fiscal year, our growth accounts in this fiscal year for approximately twelve point four percent for five hundred and eight, what, two hundred and three housing units that have started since July first of twenty twenty-two. So, I mean, we're accounting for between twelve and fifteen percent of the growth, and it's impacting between twelve and fifteen percent of the growth perceived with this particular amendment as opposed to an adequate facilities tax increase, which would have affected a hundred percent of the growth. So I feel like this is a measured response.
Thank you, sir. We haven't anyone want else?
Thank you all for your time today. I did not come here planning to speak. My name is Jody Wallace. I work with a company called Achiever Development. We are a local developer here based in Middle Tennessee. And like I said, I planned to sit in back and listen. But many of the comments impact me personally, as I am younger here in this room. And I think from hearing some of the comments, felt that myself personally wanted to speak on behalf. I reside in Sumner County in Hendersonville, born and raised here in Middle Tennessee. And what you all are discussing today is something that my wife and I are struggling with right now ourselves, trying to find a place. I grew up on five acres, desire five acres, would love to have that for my kids, but it has become, look, today, a two and a half acre lot in Sumner County is four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, and they're selling very quickly. The monthly payment on that with a twenty, twenty percent down and a twenty-year loan is roughly three thousand dollars a month. I myself cannot afford that for simply land. And so I speak to you today, from a development side, I do see both sides of it. We love more density, but we also love larger lots. Those are fantastic for the community. But also, you know, ask that, this is something that's being proposed in Sumner County as well. There's kind of rumblings of the same thing going around. And I ask as a, as a resident in Middle Tennessee, that you all strongly consider what you're, what you're looking at doing to people like myself who have moved back home and are trying to buy a home. I now, I'd be thrilled to find a half acre or even an acre lot to build a home on. And I think what the proposal here is going to make it extremely hard for me to find that, which, like was said, pushing me into the city limits and pulling back on that. So thank you all for your time today.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I will say, you've heard that at least twice now from Mr. Lannon and this young man. I have two children as well that grew up here in Wilson County. I'd love nothing more for them to come back at least somewhere nearby and be able to afford a house with whatever family they create. They're both either in college or about to start college. So I, I think of all the arguments, that's probably the most poignant, and that's something I have brought up at the Planning and Zoning Committee, as well as with the commissioners who have discussed this with me. In fact, the last time we considered any density increase or density decrease was, I don't know, two thousand and six or seven, maybe two thousand and eight time period. My memory gets fuzzy. But that was brought up then as well, is the young thing's been able to afford it. And I do think that is a noteworthy discussion to have. And we, and I also think it's noteworthy to consider that our growth projections, both regionally and for Wilson County, are significant in terms of what Woods and Poole and others project that we're going to grow to as a county, and that includes the city. What I've resolved, though, in my own mind, at personal level, is that if my kids come back here, they're probably going to have to start out and build a town on. Probably, and I started out even renting myself when I started out, until I was able to afford a subsidized loan to get into my first house. I think they'll have to follow the same track. They might just have to start with a different type of housing product than I started with, which is, again, kind of me and fellow town.
Tom, may I ask, Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yes, sir, Mr. Tom.
As a volunteer on the planning commission, I see both sides of this, but it's relatively new. It's new information for me. And I'm not comfortable making a decision on that as it is now without the little information that I have, and I don't know about anybody else. But is there, I think, don't we need more public input for people that may have...
There will be, there will be a public, a public hearing at the county commission. I will point out, and I think the attorney may agree with me on this, you've got to vote it up or down, or you can vote to defer it for a period of time. However, if you defer it, I'm going to ask that you not accept residential subdivision flats in that interim, because we will get absolutely inundated with residential subdivision flats while y'all are trying to make up, y'all and the county commission lately are trying to make up their mind.
I think, I think that's appropriate. I think the depth of this demands that, Tom. But before we get going on that, because we had it motion last time, and most of my colleagues know my feelings on, and I've used the term sprawl, and I respect these people that have larger lots and farms, but the last two meetings, this room has been filled by people that have stood at this podium and talked against density right beside them. And you guys should have been here for those two meetings. And the commissioners that stood for them and said, I've got three quarters of an acre. I've got an acre and a half, and they're going to put fifty-five homes on point two acres next to me. I'm exaggerating. But this is what's going on. And there's no, there's two things we can't control. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to start preaching here, I guess. I can't dictate to investors, and I certainly can't control people who come in here cash heavy, because we, even an older guy, have to fight that. You sell a home for a million dollars, that's a thousand square feet in California and come down here, I can't compete with you. It's not going to happen. I don't care what we do and how we vote or what we say, you're not going to change that. Because when they walk in here and say, that's a pretty land. I like her house. I want to live next to her. And boom, they do it. How many times have you gone to buy a house? And some of you in here probably have done it. And you say, I like it. I'm going to bid on it. Somebody comes in, thirty thousand dollars over asking price, you don't got to get that. I'm not going to do that. This is what we're hearing, and this is what Tom has been hearing. And these people are coming in worried about what they've done, because they've been here thirty, forty, fifty years even, up north on two thirty-one. Big thing going on up there. And we've been hearing this. So I see, Tom, a couple of comments. You were very conservative in the A2, A1 area. I mean, we increased from one thirty to one seventy-four thousand, but in residential, we dropped it down from forty-three to forty. So it's not quite as conservative? Am I not seeing that? Forty-three thousand, five sixty, and no public, down to forty thousand?
Yeah, that's just making it across the board, forty thousand square foot lot.
Sure. I mean, you, 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 you...
That's a minor, what you're talking about is if you've got a lot that has no public water, you're going to have forty-three thousand, five sixty per acre.
Exactly, exactly. Just for clarity.
There's just not a lot that's out there that have that, that would have to be on well water. There are some way up in Hendersonville, but that's not really what we...
So the percentages then, on page three, I think, when the builder stepped up, he added the two together, which was maximum overall single family in existence, one seventy-four point two six, were added together, when he wanted to have high density, and it dropped one oh nine at point three five in the proposed criteria. And you would consider that more conservative?
That's what I'm hearing.
Yes?
I didn't understand.
I'm sorry. Agriculture, let's look at A1, for example.
Mr. Repro, the way that you're looking at that, it is more conservative. It's currently, at any time today, he would be able, he would be allowed under the code to get two units per acre. If this is adopted under the code, he's going to be able to fill out that one point four four units per acre.
Wanted to clarify that. That's what we've been hearing from the public, meeting after meeting after meeting. So, Tom, I hear you. I see what you're saying. I don't mind a deferral, and I hear what my colleagues say, but I think this is what the community's been looking for.
Well, and as follow-up, talking about measured responses, there are, I think it's been mentioned, there are other counties that are either have considered or are considering similar county jurisdictions that are considering similar actions. To that point, it's outstanding, Williamson County has increased theirs to four or five acre minimums across the unincorporated area of the county. Again, we're not proposing to go four or five acres, in part because if you get above five acres, again, due to state law, as was mentioned by one of the speakers, we don't have a lot of control beyond five acres. So I don't see a lot of wisdom in going to five acre minimums across the world, because we have no control at that point, or very little.
In contrast, though...
State law. So again, in addition to the percentages of growth that we account for historically, at least in recent history, in the unincorporated areas, I feel like this is a measured response in terms of what type of density increases we're talking about from top to bottom. The, I do have, this includes Watertown, because we do a lot of their planning anyways, but countywide, we believe we have around sixty-two thousand nine hundred and fifty-seven parcels. That's inside and outside the cities. That would include commercial as well, just to bear this.
Outside of cities?
No.
Inside and out?
Inside, inside. We've got sixty-two thousand nine hundred and fifty-seven parcels. We've got thirty-three thousand four hundred and fifty-nine unincorporated parcels, four parcels that are in the city of Watertown. And then we have roughly, of the ones that are currently that we've developed at acre or less, subdivision density or acre or less lot density, we've got thirteen thousand four hundred and seventy parcels, according to the tax records we've got available in our GIS system.
Across all zones.
In, not in the city of London, not in the city of Mount Julian, Watertown and unincorporated areas. We've got thirteen thousand four hundred and seventy of the thirty-three thousand four hundred and fifty-nine total parcels in the unincorporated areas, including Watertown.
Tom, did the planning and zoning committee get a chance to hear all this in detail like that?
They heard, they heard about the growth numbers that I gave you with regard to the percentages. They also, they did not hear about this. We just, I think Mr. Turner had called me asking some questions about the amendment, and one of the questions he asked was, how many parcels are under an acre? And so I only had to try to compile that quick enough.
But you don't know how many are under an acre in A1 of the...
I can find that out, but no, I don't have that number of that.
Tom, what, I'm not interested. We will have a public hearing, obviously.
Well, you have a public hearing today, but you're...
Yeah, what I'd like to see is a work session by this panel. If we want to call somebody to discuss this with us, that would be fine. I don't know whether that would be legal from a legal stance. Control that meeting a little bit to our preferences of who we want to talk to, specialists in the field and the area to get the, all the nuances. And then if you want to have a public hearing more like we're having today, that's fine too. But that's the thing that I would like to see us do here. May I make some comments, too?
Sure.
I'm not as eloquent as the counselor back there or substantive as my colleague here, but I got a few other things I want to... I've got two more to finish, and then I'm done. Two key points, Mr. Chairman. One is, as an engineer, we hold the old adage, that glass is half full, that glass is half empty. What I say is that you designed it wrong. It's simple. Another thing, too, and I look through this community and I see mo, and I know most of you, developers and builders and real estate agents, you have a heart, and we're not talking about that, people haven't mentioned that, for your neighbor, because you live here. You've been here. But there's nothing we can control when those California builders and New York builders and Atlanta builders all show up and say, I'm going to maximize my return, and I'm going to put everything I can on this lot, including birdhouses. I'm moving everybody in. You can't control that. We can't vote that out. There's no legal precedent to tell us we can do that. So you've got all this outside influence coming in. I trust some of these builders. I've worked with some of them. They're good people. And when somebody says next door, this kind of bothers me, or you're a little too close, or you're not taking into consideration, you know what? They listen, and they work together. A lot of these builders will do that. But the ones that from out of town, they won't do that. So you got to consider that, too, when you start talking about this. I appreciate what Tom's gone through, but I also appreciate what my colleague said is, maybe there's not enough time to decide this, because I've only had a day to look this over from an email last night, and I'm going, there's a lot of numbers here. I can do the math, but are we going in the right direction? I trust Tom. And if we were forced to make that decision today, I think everybody knows where I would go. Yes, sir. Yeah, you brought us some good points there. I think there's a philosophy, an overview here we have to establish, and then you got to punch in the numbers to see how it flies. The other thing about that, there is no perfect solution to this. There is no, you go in any direction here, and you're going to find something that's not right. It's just the way things are. But I, I wanted to make a couple of comments, and struggle with me a little bit, because I'm not as good as the other two guys are presenting this. I see the thing that is primarily, the most important thing, and Tom corrected me here, is a proposal, or this is a tool to control growth. Would you not agree with that, Tom?
It's a tool to direct densities.
That's controlling growth.
Within fifteen percent, given permit history of the county.
Okay. So we're interested in controlling growth. Now, the cities are also involved in this. They're interested in growth, but more importantly, where the growth goes. And so we've got a twofold issue. We're concerned about growth overall. They're concerned in a more concentrated thinking of, where is it going? And that brings a nuance to all of this that you have to consider and be cautious in how you work with them on things. Growth's hard to stop, high pressure on both sides for it and against it. We may think we are a rural county, and that's not totally so. We are not a city, but the demand for city services is pushed on us for several years, and it's growing. Sheriff's office, chief of police, fire and ambulance, WEMA, Lebanon Fire. We've been around with city street departments in the cities. We have a road commission. Wilson County has a school system. The city has a school system. And a new effect, a wrinkle that really tightened this race, a Water and Wastewater Authority. And now we've got a sewer system as well. We've got all the components. We've even gone so far as to call our county executive a mayor now. Getting pretty close, aren't we? Got to be extremely careful and realize what we are. We are not a rural area anymore. From stateful to hermitage, it's changing. A little denser, a little thicker, a little higher, a little taller, but it's all the same game that's going on. We have a very strong water and wastewater, and I, please bear with me, it sounds like I'm going to be ranting here. We have a very strong wastewater program, and Brother Lubre back here is a very good manager. I know Chris A. Goodclow, and he knows his business. A very impressive board out there. Jeff Joines is on it. I know Jeff, and I know many of the others. They're legal counsels. They're, they're around the block. I respect them. I feel like they know what they are doing out there. I feel like they know what they are doing out there. And so we find ourselves in that, in that particular situation. That leads me to the thinking of, you know, in the eighties, uh, I was on this board. We had, we had, we had crowds like this all the time. What was the argument? Oh, we don't want septic tanks. It'll be sewer in our ditches. It'll be cesspools in our yards. It's been our streams. My wells are going to be ruined and the developer sitting on the back row, we got to build, we got to build, we got to build, we got to build. Same game. All of a sudden, the state does something wonderful. They call a step system, a legal certified public sewer system. And with the agency that I just described to you and its strength and its expertise, we're in business here. This thing changed overnight. The growth expanded in here. Things were relaxed. People went along with the technicals of it and it worked fine. I don't want to lose that. I don't like what I see of that regulation in regard to the possibility of septic tanks rearing their heads again. Now, I'm not opposed to septic tanks. They're needed. In fact, the step system utilizes a septic tank. It manages it and keeps it working like it ought to. Even to the point if the silage in your septic tank get in there, they pump it under the regulations they've got to follow. That is strong as any sewer system, a city sewer system could be. We've got it, people, and I don't want to lose that. And I don't want to see these septic tanks work back in the back door on us. The way I read this and the way the hint has been all the way around here, that potential possibility is there, is there. I'm going to be opposed to this if nothing else from losing that, losing that as we develop and grow. Our water and sewer system, our program here in the county, I talked to our director back there. What's the name of this case study, Chris?
So the, that's from the Water Research Foundation looking at decentralized systems and treatment processes throughout, um, Columbia University, Columbia Water Center is involved in that research project.
Very sophisticated.
Yes.
Wide range. They're going to do some case studies nationwide, international. Austin, Texas is in that, Denver, Colorado, Vancouver, British Columbia, the Twin Cities region. And down at the bottom of that list of five, Wilson County, Tennessee. Now, some don't come be, come in here and jacklegging and tell me they don't know what they're doing. Don't you tell me that. I won't listen to you. Okay. GRC. The Regional, Greater Regional Council of Governments, isn't that correct, Chris?
Better than that.
Better out, thank you. Suggs Creek Watershed Base Plan, a full report. They made this report, didn't they? One of the things they say over in here is we must make every intention to rid ourselves of septic tanks. Septic tanks. Growth. I don't want this county robbed of growth area. I want to cooperate and work with cities in every way. Lebanon. Their growth, recommended growth line corresponds to the water authority's water service area as well as their wastewater service area. That's good. We know where we can go. They know where they can go. Oh, but you're crimping the cities. Do you know how, we talked about intensity on those houses. My son lives in Allen, Texas, of a Dallas suburb, thirty feet between a half a million dollar house. That's a city. We're nowhere near that. Nowhere near that. They know where they can go. The water authority's line of their service area with Mount Juliet is an agreed upon line. Funny, they can't get an agreement with them over that sewer line. Why? Why? They want the area for growth. Now, I don't want to get in a war here over jurisdiction, but well, I see the massive organization this county has already got in place for being operated almost like a city just to roll over, well, you can take that, well, you can have that. Don't give me that. Don't give me that. And this particular plan, well, it might, it might do that. I've got one other point I want to make. What's the solution? We've got to do something. We talk about controlling growth. What have we got to control growth? What are we doing to control growth? Ever heard of an impact fee? Works. Uniforms. Across the board. You know what you're going to do when you start this business of jacklegging your rules and regulations? We'll tweak a little here and we'll tweak a little over here. And one of these days we wake up and we've got such a hodgepodge of jungle of regulations, we won't know where the hell we are. We don't need that. We need a good, uniform way to handle this. You could make a special impact fee for the folks at WEMA. They need it. This man, this man and this man know that firsthand. There are all kinds of ways you can handle that. It's already in place. It works. It generates lots of money. Raise the thing. Don't jackleg the sizes of the lots. Raise the thing. That's my feeling, what we should be doing rather than this solution right here. We've already got it in place and it works. We need to realize what we are. We are that close to being a city. What's the square miles of Wilson County?
Five hundred and eighty-four including water, I believe.
Pretty big, almost city, isn't it?
Well, I got the exact number.
That's close enough, Tom. Thank you.
We will leave with that and I, Tom does an unbelievable job. This thing is, is, is to a, we're at a, we're at a real turning point. We, we really got to pay attention in this county in the next few years. And that means this board is not going to make everybody happy. Can't. Impossible. Impossible. I think about a lot, the greatest good for all. What does that mean? Doesn't necessarily mean a twenty-five home community down here. It means for everybody in that square mileage he just quoted, our taxes, our schools, our roads. We have to do what's right for the entire area and it's massive and growing by leaps and bounds. Growing by leaps and bounds. So the solution is the impact fee. Don't let source, don't let anybody for one minute try to bring septic tanks and damage the incredible progress these people have made and the, the, the respect they have nationwide, nationwide. That's all I have.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
One more point with a question to Mr. Luber. Am I to assume then from my colleague's emotional despondent that, uh, large lots require septic systems and you would not service them with a step system and run another hundred feet of a line? Or will a step system work in larger lots?
The, the, the technology will work fine. It's just a, a cost factor. If you talk to the developers to build step systems, are going to be more cost per lot versus going on a septic system.
Which is another way to get revenue to, from the developers anyway. But it's not prohibitive to have a larger lot and a step system. Is that correct?
That is correct. You're just going to run the lot size up in cost and they won't get off on it.
I didn't make a statement earlier. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Um, I'm voting for this. He said he's voting against it, but I think I'm for it. That's all I have.
If we could, I want to get back to the public comment. These people have taken their time to be here. Anybody else wants to speak on this that hadn't spoke yet, sir? Yeah, I'm sorry.
Again, Randy Seixton, the Landmark Co., one of the things that Tom brought out is the fact that there are sixty-two thousand some odd parcels. Not all of that property can be developed and I can speak to that. I look at probably, I'm the land manager for our company in terms of acquisition and development. I probably look at no less than fifty parcels per month on an average, turn, turn the majority of them down just because of the fact that either the soils are bad, the water and sewer availability isn't there, or it's just in an area that's not ready for development. I've actually sat with Chris and we've talked at length on countless times about different parcels. I've sent emails to Tom and Chris, as a matter of fact, and asked them the same thing. What can we do here? What's the maximum density? There was an eighty acre parcel, just as an example, that I wanted to develop and Chris can confirm this. The water is to the property, but the problem is the pressure isn't there. So that's one parcel. There are countless parcels like that throughout Wilson County that they will not be developed anytime soon. If you subtract those out of the sixty-two some odd thousand, I would hasn't, I wouldn't hesitate to guess that there's probably half of that that can be developed at some point in time. Take out Watertown, take out Lebanon, take out Mount Juliet. Now you're down to a few thousand parcels that can be developed. Don't lose sight of the fact that that's your revenue growth for the future. Now, if you, I don't want to use the word, if you destroy that by creating the sprawl and burn through that acreage faster by creating these larger lots, you're cutting your nose off in spite of your face and losing future revenue. Less density isn't the problem. Again, it's, that's, that just drives the cost up as we've heard and as I can tell you, our average home cost this year will be well over five hundred thousand dollars, approaching six hundred thousand. That's not a first time home buyer product. So again, fees, yes, increase of fees. That can be passed along to the, to the end user. You were talking about, uh, what's to keep investors from coming in and buying, uh, all these communities? In our homeowners association documents, we limit the amount of units that investors can buy to ten to fifteen percent that can be rented. When we reach that maximum, if you have a piece, if you're an owner and you want to rent, you have to wait. You have to wait until somebody else isn't using them. We control with property management. There are, there are ways to keep prop, keep the homes affordable and.
But it would be my position that we cannot acquire that as a government. If you choose to do that, that's your business.
Tom, that's not, it's not something we're asking you to require. We're volunteering to do that because we know from our standpoint that it's going to create problems for us as well if, again, if companies come in and burn through all the usable acreage and there's nothing left for us. We're a home building company that's been here for thirty-two years. We don't want to be forced out of the market because we're out of property or because we have to, instead of driving twenty minutes from our office, we have to go an hour, hour and a half to develop a piece of property in Bedford County or someplace else. It's just not, it's not who we are and, and we would ask you to consider the fact that density controls, look at what your available properties are that can be developed before you consider the fact that it's sixty-two thousand. That number is considerably less.
That's the kind of things he's talking about as a, in a work session, we need to hear. A work session with limited numbers of people, you and I, we decide to come in here and talk to us. And then if we want to present based on that to the general public in hearings, that's great.
If you wish to have a work session, I have no problem with that. I suggest that you would want the planning and zoning committees, any commissioners that wish to come in.
Sure. They want to come.
I would also suggest that in the interim, that we, uh, restrict new subdivision plats and metals. Now, if we've got one that's already in the proper and in the process, I'm perfectly happy going ahead and processing those through the planning commission because those are going to be grandfathered in any case.
So why would we do that, Tom? Why would we restrict it while we're doing it?
Because we're going to get piled on with, uh, unnecessary subdivision plats and metals for people trying to secure.
A place in life.
A zoning entitlement. Mike, would you like to speak to that?
Well, once they do that, once you act on it, then they have vested rights and you can't go back and.
And once they submit it, in my opinion, they have.
So you just have a moratorium and we have to expedite to keep it from getting out of hand.
Don't make a very long moratorium because there are a whole lot of factors here, one of which is adequate facility taxes and things that support like the building of our schools and jail and that type of thing. Whatever decision you're going to make, make it pretty quick. I'm not lobbying either one.
Do you think it's ill-advisable to have a work session structured like that?
No, I don't, but I don't, I think this side we would knock out in the next thirty minutes.
So, uh, we've gone all the way around here, but we hadn't talked about the farmer and homeowner who invested all of his time in life and now wants to sell his property. And I'm, I'm very concerned that we protect the rights of those people. There's some of them in this room here right now that's, that's got large tracts of land. They haven't sold them yet and I know they're concerned about this and, and I am too on that, on that part of it. There's some in this room that have large tracts of, tracts of land, probably four of these. The preacher here said, uh, which his daddy say, his daddy was my preacher. I guess y'all can tell that. This, this needs some thought. This, that's why I asked you, Tom, did the committee have a chance to hear this much input? Because I looked at the minutes. The committee lasted an hour and thirty-two minutes and it was the last thing brought up. And y'all had had a whole lot of conversation about a whole lot of other stuff. How much time was spent, in fairness to the committee, I served on it one time. How much time was put into this or was it just all the years of conversation that kind of led to that?
I think, I think it was the last thirty-two minutes, but the, I'm not sure if it was actually the last thing that's heard. I, I, my recollections are the same, but I was thinking that my budget hearings were the last thing.
That's right.
Anyways, um, that all being said, um, it was probably a litany of conversations that's occurred over a number of years, both in that committee and outside of that committee. And if I was.
County Commissioner.
And if I was sitting back over here right now, which I'm not, um, they're in the middle of the budget process. You know, they've got a lot on their plate. This is unknown out here to some degree. I, I just, I'm like, I'm telling you guys, I ain't too smart. I'm sitting here trying to figure out some of this on the fly. I'm just telling you the truth. Think I am, you've overestimated my ability to be educated. But it's got to be looked at and it's got to be looked at in depth. I don't know how we do it. I don't know how, why, how the committee here would like to proceed with it. I've heard iterations of conversations. I've got more phone calls about this than I did the entire last year I was on the county commission from different people, um, both sides. So, um, I don't know how to go forward. I'm going to take some wisdom from somebody how to move this thing forward.
This sets the pace for what this community is, this county's going to do growth wise. I feel like what we do here will set the pace for what we do for the next fifteen, twenty years.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
How come this isn't a, a product of the, or a part of the land use plan?
It may very well have been, but the land use plan is held up indefinitely.
Hasn't it come back up in conversation?
It's held, no, it's held up indefinitely because of the growth plan.
How, how does, how does that happen? I already mean to interrupt you.
We had our public input meetings on the, on the land use plan. And again, this is a product of what we already knows as well from the public lab clear that they were effectively growthed in and wanted to see us do something to address growth, particularly in regards to different infrastructure. And I'm not just talking about water and sewer. I'm talking about roads, schools, fire, whatever, uh, the conditions of that and things like that. The, uh, it got held up because Mount Juliet is proposing a planning region and growth boundary that extends to the county line. And as one of their policy requests, they were asking that we go to acre minimum lot in their planning region, whatever it may end up being. And I, from my perspective, I'm not going to do that within one planning region. If I'm going to do that, I'm going to, I'm going to amend the ordinance to where it is fair and not arbitrary. Mr. Chairman, may I say something?
Yes, sir, if you would, come forward. Mr. AG.
My name is Jim Agee, I think the majority of the, you know, you, on this moratorium thing, I mean, I'm, I've had two, we had two flats before you this morning, where I'm, we're working with homeowners, and most of them are on the states here in Wilson County, and we've got a half dozen more that we're going to be presenting to the commission. And I would respectfully ask you not to put a moratorium, because these are states, these are things we have planned to sell, and I mean, they're not 100-block subdivisions, you know, they're, they're five, 10 at the most, you know, might be some 10, 12, but, you know, just not put a moratorium to, to slow this process down, what we have working. And, and all these people are, you know, they've owned these farms for years.
Yes, sir.
And I respectfully ask that.
Thank you, sir.
I would respectfully request, if that's your position as a board, that you voted up for that, because it will, it will cause us, it will cause you-
Let me ask you, Tom, I hear, I hear what you're saying, but your, your position that you're going to be inundated in the next 30 days doesn't seem completely reasonable to me, because people would have to have things paper-ready right now to meet your two-week, they've got to have stuff in within two weeks from today to be on the next month's agenda. You can't imagine that you would be inundated in the next two weeks. Now, you correct me if I'm wrong, but that would be my, the way I would look at that. And I understand why you don't want to stack a plaque, I think.
Number one, I'm not sure we can get the workshop done in 30 days. I think it may take somewhere more 10 to 60 days to get it to a workshop and to the county commission, with a recommendation one way or the other from this board. Number two, I, you might be surprised.
Tom, the way I would bring something on the back of my- I could be wrong, I just don't see that happening in two weeks.
We've got, on the 21st, we have a meeting-
They start an hour early.
With, but I guess you got the agenda pretty well timed up there.
Yes. Okay. Do we have any, anyone else in the public wishing to speak on this case?
Over here.
Yes, sir, Mr. Winchester.
My name's Luke Winchester, know many of you guys out here? It's an interesting point. May I suggest, you know, I agree, hearing you guys on both sides of the fence, and obviously I'm kind of on both sides of the fence as well in, in what I do, but maybe take action on your item in order to press your item forward, apply the recommendation item back to your, to your commissioner, if I'm not mistaken, correct me if I'm wrong.
The committee.
But at least it gets, your recommendation allows your project to move forward right there, maybe make a subject to your workshop comments, and workshop does have its inherent value out there from the public and whatnot, but the only comment that I was going to share with that is that if you choose to conduct your workshop, maybe invite your municipality leaders from both City of Lebanon, City of Watertown, City of Mount Juliet as well, because what you're proposing up here is a lot of what we see in the city municipalities, and you're just not seeing it in the county right now, so they might be to shed some advice and some opinions to each of you all, so that you make the best informative decision what's best for all of us.
And Luke, that's why I asked how much time went into this before we got here.
Yeah.
Because thi- this is a very, very sensitive issue, people of both sides.
Yes, sir.
And nobody's worked harder at trying to do what's right than Tom. If I was doing a putt, he'd be, that'd be my guy right over there. But this is, this is really complicated, and, and you just can't do it in a 10-minute session or 30-minute session, because there's too many variables out there, too many unintended consequences, and everybody's not going to be happy at the end.
Yes.
But I don't want anybody to say we didn't do due diligence.
Yes.
And try to find the right answer when we finally make a recommendation, or maybe not recommend a recommendation to county commission. Maybe send it on to county commission with no recommendation, and let them decide.
And they mentioned, for sure, we mentioned our UGV meeting for the City of Mount Juliet, that's actually, we have a meeting coming up, I believe, 5:00, 27, that-
But I don't, but I don't want five other people sitting in here putting pressure on it. I've sat over there, that's not fair to them. But this is going to happen, I think, irregardless, but we've got to make an informed decision here. And right now, I see, I have all the knowledge I need and the tools at my disposal to make that.
That's why I thought that it might be beneficial to ask your municipality leaders to attend that workshop that you're supposed to do that direction.
You can't stop the growth, all you can do is bend it.
Luke, I do have one question, I'm not trying to delay the meeting. Does that mean you come out on 27th? Is that a city meeting, or is that the urban growth, is that not the county's growth?
Work session.
With a city workshop?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, open to public likewise.
Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone else wishing to speak on this case today? This time, we'll close the public comment session and I'd ask for any comments or questions from the board, any additional comments from the board.
I have a question of how long it can be deferred and how many times it can be deferred.
You know, go to county commission regardless.
Well, with all due respect to Tom, I think we need to be conscious of what this could potentially do to his office long-term. I don't know that we have to act on it, period, because it's just something that's been brought forth by the planning and zoning committee, not by an individual. I don't know that there's a restrictive timeline here officially.
There's not a restrictive timeline per se, but the county commission at some point can bring it up to the floor with, as long as there's a public hearing or something like that.
Maybe that's what will happen.
They're going to anyway.
They're supposed to consider a recommendation as a body on any zoning.
So, if it goes forward, if it goes forward to them with no recommendation, what happens?
If you vote to forward it with no recommendation, I suppose that's what we'll take.
Okay. We do have a job to try to make a recommendation.
We're a panel to do what's right and study this, I think.
So, you want a workshop here, Sam?
I don't know, I'm just, I'm just talking out loud, everybody else is here.
You've got the chairman of the committee right here, with his calendar out.
Gary, would you like to speak to this at all, Mr. McCarroll?
If you want a workshop, let's just call a workshop.
Set a date and call it, tell them it's mandatory, or they got to be there, or something. Swing in there.
I don't think you can make, no, you can't.
I don't know that we can make it mandatory, but we can, we can advise it, have better food, we'll get better turnout.
With the add-on of a moratorium for total.
Then why don't you have a cookout?
Oh, good.
Substitution biscuits.
Well, let's don't, let's jump in, say we're going to have one, it still, still needs to be some thought process to who would be in that thing. And again, everybody's not going to be agreeable, you've got to control the time on it. I mean, there's a lot, puts a lot of pressure on you, Mr. Chairman, but still, a lot of thought has to go into it, what kind of workshop you have, where you have it at, who's going to be in, and then after the workshop, I assume we would let the public come in, make their public comments about it. I still don't, I never want to show the public.
At the workshop? At the workshop, I wouldn't take it.
No, workshop's not the place to have public comments.
Well, there's another public hearing scheduled, that would have to be scheduled for the county commission.
Correct.
Or if you wish for it to come back here, we could advertise another public hearing, plant tools and so on.
This stuff might get complicated.
Can we set a timestamp, say within two weeks, or three?
Well, I will tell you this, that personal matter, March 31st through the first week of April, that I'd likely will not be able to.
And I do too.
And it's not a vacation.
Mine ain't either.
Okay, we have any other questions from our board? This time, I'll call for a motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve the amendment that's been presented to us.
Second. We have a motion, Ms. Nicholson, a second by Mr. Rempro, to approve it. All those in favor vote, or if you would, please raise your right hand. We have two votes to approve, all those opposed, raise your right hand, please. We have eight votes against. That motion will fail.
Not to record, no, I abstain, I don't know.
I'm sorry, I thought you raised your hand.
What'd you say, I don't know in that?
No, I don't know in that.
Okay. I will call for another motion.
I move, Mr. Chairman, we call a workshop meeting to discuss the issues and present a vote after following that by no later than the next meeting.
Let me make sure I'm saying, your, your motion is for the cap, the, the planning commission and other related committees to schedule a workshop between now and our next planning commission, and at that time, we will readdress this and vote for it.
On the issue.
We have a motion to defer-
We won't vote on it in the workshop.
No, 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 no. Vote on it when it comes back here. We have a motion to defer until the next meeting. Do we have a second? I'll second that motion. We have a motion, a second, to defer to the next meeting, just whether it's that-
31st.
Uh, will that be the 21st, Tom?
31st of April, one, two, three, yeah.
I believe that's right.
Until the 21st of April.
Mr. Chairman. With or without a moratorium?
That is not part of the existing motion.
So, no protection for Tom's office?
That's not part of the existing motion.
Not part of the, not part of the vote.
Uh, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor of the-
I have a point of discussion, Mr. Chairman. If, if we've already voted to not approve this, isn't that a recommendation to the county commission?
No.
You have to make the motion.
Not at that point. We call for another motion, we have another motion. All those in favor of deferring for 30 days, please raise your right hand. We have seven. Yes, and all those opposed? We have two. This will be brought before the April meeting of the Wilson County Plant Commission again. And Tom, with all due respect on the moratorium, I'm certainly available to help you facilitate and organize whatever kind of workshop. I know this is being thrown on you, I am more than willing to help you with whatever I can to facilitate that, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay. Do we have anything else you need to talk about today?
No, sir.
Okay. If that's the case, we stand adjourned.